I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning.
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 Uh, so the meeting's ordered. Getting a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
First, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, general public concerns? Don't see any. We're gonna drop down and approve claims so we can get that started.
Motion approved. Second by Carl, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, general public concerns? Don't see any. We're gonna drop down and approve claims so we can get that started.
I reviewed the claim to enter chairman. It looked to me like we had two hundred and sixty-three thousand four eighty-seven twenty-one general claims and four hundred and seventy-six thousand oh fifty-two point forty-six and drainage. I move the approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, you got first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Motion carries. Okay, I'm gonna sign that book and give this to...
And I forgot to have... No, I looked at my agenda. I had a busy weekend, sorry. Um, Trish wanted us to include something under drainage, approve pay estimate number two, Peterson excavating, on Humboldt right three and forty-seven. So we'll have to go back and...
The amended agenda? Alright, we're gonna go back up to the top.
Sorry, guys.
Make a motion to amend the agenda. I stayed by Peggy for a minute.
I'll second that.
Okay, you got first and second for the amended agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That'd be done during drainage.
Yes.
So those numbers were two sixty-three, four eighty-seven twenty-one, and four seventy-six, oh fifty-two, forty-six.
Correct.
A lot of big and urban tiles.
Alrighty. General public concerns, I guess we did, uh, Paul Jacobson. Oh, you wanna get something out of here?
Can I just quickly get that?
Yeah.
No, like, Mickey said, this is gonna go on and on and on.
Alright, Dean. Dean, step up and talk to us about your jailers.
Okay, um, basically, hopefully these will be the last two I gotta hire so that we're full staff, full-time and part-time, so this should finish it, so...
Okay.
So we should be good.
Okay, well, we got a full-time jailer, Sheila Cordero.
Yep.
At sixteen seventy-nine.
Yep.
And a part-time jailer, Ashlyn Nicholson.
Yep.
At fourteen sixty-nine.
Yes, I believe that's right.
Where'd you come from, Dean?
Um, they both live here. Uh, Sheila, uh, was a full-time jailer over in Hamilton County, and she took the job here, and then Ashlyn Nicholson, she's, uh, um, a young lady that lives here, and, uh, she applied. Yep.
Okay.
I have a question. What does the non-certified hourly rate mean? For Ashlyn?
Well, uh, you have, if you hire a jailer and they go to the forty-hour school down in Des Moines at the academy, then you're considered a full, or a certified jailer. Ashlyn is not certified yet. She hasn't gone to the forty-hour school yet, so that's the difference.
Okay, that's the non-certified.
Yes.
Does that mean there's something she probably would be planning to attend?
Yes, within the first year, we have to send her down to that school.
Then does the certified hourly rate go up after that?
Once she's, uh, probationed and she's certified, she goes up to the next step.
Okay, so the certified is that she hasn't taken that?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve.
First?
Second.
Okay, now this would be just for the first one, because there are two separate ones.
For Sheila.
Okay, for Sheila.
I'll second that.
Second by Bruce, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the hiring of Ashlyn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Alright, thank you.
You're doing the twenty-eight E right now?
Yeah, I'm the door sheriff here. Okay, well, authorize chairman to sign twenty-eight E law enforcement contract to the city of Humboldt.
And I gave you guys copies of that. Um, I also sent a note off to John Beatty. He said he'd already looked it over. Everything was good.
Things going pretty good there.
Yeah, I believe so.
I have already copied it. You did the whole day anyway, didn't you?
This one, you probably got that in order. You've got the city of Humboldt signature, but not ours yet.
Okay.
And then both you and county attorney will need to sign off on the original at some point. So do you have a copy of the report if you want to use it now or if you wanna wait till later?
I just, I just wanna go through it and just read it.
Yeah, we do it every year, mainly because there's a built-in increase, I suppose. Is that why we have to do it every year?
What?
Is this the yearly deal?
Oh, no, this is the, the contract to put the sheriff as the police chief. We don't do that every year.
How often do we do that?
It's been probably five weeks.
Four years.
I guess, yeah.
It's been quite a few years.
Taking that long to reevaluate you or what?
Well, I need all the evaluation I can get, so... Sometimes I wonder.
I didn't know how often it was done.
I didn't know that. I just figured it was done every year.
No, it's been, well, it's been four or five years, yeah.
Now, the ones that we have with the cities that are on...
Right, yeah.
Change every year, but not usually.
Yeah, I just want, I'd just like to read through to make sure there's... Alright.
Do that till next week?
I would, can you just stay with till next week?
Does that have something on the order, Janet, that is a yearly contract? Did you happen to see that?
That's what says at the bottom of the front page, duration of the agreement, last from July first, twenty-seventeen, came the thirtieth, twenty-eight.
Yep.
And then it automatically renewes.
Yeah.
So is that what you wanna do, is wait till next week?
Just go ahead and sign it. I'm sure it's fine. Pep, bro, chuckle from our radio announcer.
It's a binding contract.
Yes, yes.
I'll make a motion to reject it, and, uh, you, authorize you to sign it, Rick.
Okay. First?
I'll second.
Second by Dave Lee.
City council has signed the same contract as you.
They already did.
They already did, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then we'll just wait for your signature, and then we'll be the final...
Yep, yep.
Hold on to it.
Yeah, 'cause John has signed it too, right?
I can sign, and you can look at it, and if you don't like it, you don't have to sign it.
Yep. Yeah, 'cause I know they're talking about changing a few things, and I'd just like to read it myself, just to make sure. Yep. So, alright, alright. Thank you.
See, thanks, Dean.
Thanks for getting me in here before Paul.
Yeah.
Alright, Paul, your turn.
Thank you. Paul's got a new shirt though. That looks pretty nice.
No, nothing. Better work before it's too cool.
Well, they changed the...
No, no, I'm just saying you, the reds sometimes get pushed back to the back if they start falling.
Good morning. Uh, we lost the auditor, but this morning, uh, I have only one item on there, and it's to approve Humboldt County fiscal year two thousand seventeen official report of the county highway engineer. Even though the copy that I gave you guys Thursday is stamped unofficial, all of a sudden, when we sign it and done with it, it doesn't become official until the DOT approves it, which they haven't yet. Uh, the state law requires the county engineer shall submit honor before September fifteenth the report of the activities, and that's what I've done, and I submitted it the eighth of August. Uh, I will briefly review some of this. Um, I'm sure there'd be questions if you started looking at this in detail. This accounts for every penny run-through claims, uh, that you, uh, see, uh, twice a month here at this level, and, and every expense goes to some, uh, some pigeonhole of time. Um, financial receipts on sheet two, you can see our, uh... Our expenses, I guess I should start on sheet two. Total expenditures was about four point six seven million. If you turn the page to sheet three, you can see total receipts was about four point six million with the, uh, carryover construction and, and, uh, new equipment. Uh, it looks like we spent about what we brought in, uh, for the year, and, uh, that's the way it works out this year. Uh, interesting to note on the income side, two point four million of its, uh, regular road use tax. The time twenty-one is a different version of road use tax, which makes that two point six four million out of the four point six that we had. Our, our regular road taxes up on top, rural basic of one point one nine five, and a hundred and six thousand of general basic. General basic is that tax against every asset in Humboldt County, a hundred and six thousand. The one point one nine five is all the receipts of everything outside of every corporate limit. It's all the rural levy. Okay, you can correct me if I'm wrong as I'm reciting here, but, uh, total taxable on the county is about, uh, one point three million, uh, and, uh, we get about two point six million, uh, through road use tax. Um, so it's about a one-third, two-thirds relationship. You notice local option sales tax at five hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and one dollars is effectively two years. Last year, we missed the transfer before the end of the year, thus we rolled two years into one. We should be looking at, uh, about a quarter million of local options, which is irritated for infrastructure, and, uh, when we transfer, we irritate which projects they go to. Otherwise, that's the big numbers on receipts. Um, expenses are detailed, uh, throughout the rest of the report. Administration and engineering, uh, county construction, uh, totaled of one point two million dollars of construction, bridges and culverts, any maintenance on bridges and culverts, any maintenance on roads, uh, and including the reimbursements. I did want to point out, uh, point out on entrances, 'cause we have reimbursement for that, and we have an expense for that. And where did I hide it?
Entrances, what do you mean by that? Driveways, valley?
Driveways. Wow, I'm drawing a blank, can't see it. Entrances, four eighty-four. Four eighty is roadside maintenance. It's on sheet six. We discussed and raised entrance fees a, a little bit, uh, when we reviewed the policy. Uh, four eighty-four details all the expenses against entrances. It's on sheet six toward the bottom. We had six hundred sixty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars of expense on the entrance, and you can see down in the reimbursements on what we were paid to build them. We were just short of forty-two thousand. Uh, right next to the bottom is, uh, so we're about one-third, two-thirds there. But granted, some of the entrances might be repair something that was out there, so there may be repair costs in it. So it isn't just all entrances building them new. Um, I don't know that there was anything out of the ordinary, uh, on the rest of the expenses, uh, or time. As you look at these over the year, where we spend the time goes, if we have a heavy winter, obviously, all of the activities that we do otherwise in an open winter get shifted around. Instead of, it comes out of snow, if it's an open winter, and goes into brush cutting or, or some kind of maintenance, outside maintenance, uh, uh, that we can do in the wintertime, it shifts things around, but, uh, and you see that every year in the budget preparation. We see these numbers regurgitated, uh, for up to ten years back in these categories, so you can see what kind of averages and where we fluctuate. But, uh, other than that, uh, I wanted to point a couple things out. Most of it's self-explanatory. Uh, if, uh, there are questions or anybody wants further details, I know Mr. Kruger isn't waiting, but I wish he was sitting here. We would go in great detail. No, I'm kidding.
Uh, I got a question on sheet four, uh, administration engineering. Just explain, they're both listed, seven hundred and seven hundred and one listed salary. Can you just explain the breakdown of that, please?
Salaries, uh, one-ten is, uh, mostly me, seventy percent of my salary and overhead, and all of Sue's salary and overhead. Um, two-ten then in seven-hundred-and-one is thirty percent of me and, and overhead, and Ben and Dave, and any, and any maintenance staff that we've asked to pull up to do an engineering function. I mean, we may take somebody and pull them as part of construction. Their costs would then be in, uh, in, in, in two-ten. It'd be a two-fourteen number, but it would come in under two-ten. That is not the salaries. That's all costs.
So what's, what's in that cost besides the salaries?
All overhead.
And overhead, yeah.
Health insurance, FICA, IFRS, uh, the pro-rate, the, uh, eighty thousand dollars of workers' comp goes prorated dollar per dollar. It doesn't go by function. It goes dollar by dollar, uh, uh, back into every expense in there. Um, the pro rates are all done and shown in here. Uh, even, anything that can't be assigned to a single task is prorated back in dollar per dollar. So if you have a hundred thousand dollar, uh, salary and a fifty thousand dollar salary, anything that's prorated would get twice the pro rate on the hundred thousand dollar one than it does to fifty thousand. It, it's just part of the overhead, uh, prorated back to a function.
And the prorated is, like you said, the example, workers' comp, things like that?
Yes. Uh, all of the things that are insurances, even the, uh, well, building insurance goes to one category. So does the inland marine, uh, six-twenty-six goes to all the trucks and the vehicles, but any other thing, any safety meeting, any safety expenses, uh, uh, that are, that are, uh, area-wide or, or function-wide, all goes into everybody's salary, dollar for dollar.
So the, and the salaries between the administration engineering, nothing with the secondary road workers involved in there?
No, no. They're all, all their salaries are in each other function beyond, uh, for instance, their time and all their overhead, building shoulders or ditch cleaning, anything they do, it's logged on their time.
It's categorized for what they're doing.
To what they're doing, and then the expense of all the overhead gets prorated at the, every month is, yeah, it's monthly, they prorate, and, and all the things are adjusted for the year. Uh...
Well, really, in other words, then, if you look at grading road or plowing the road, the expense listed is including time from the said workers.
Oh, yeah.
That, that, hours are calculated into these figures.
They log every day as to what they're doing.
So if that's whatever's on that, and it says X number for X project, that is, uh, their time.
Most of the blade...
Blading only, obviously, grand majority of that would be hourly wage. Then also would you include the fuel in that, all gets lumped into that?
Right.
So it's a total.
The blading, blading and granular, no, the fuel is a separate category. The fuel, we expense the fuel, and we know what they burn. The fuel shows up in its own, uh, uh, the diesel fuel is its own line item in here. So the blading of granular four fifty-one does not include the diesel fuel. Doesn't include the tires. It doesn't include the equipment itself. That's just, that's labor and overhead.
Labor and overhead.
Because there's separate categories for the tires, the equipment repairs, um, equipment repair is six twenty. If the machine was, uh, equipment supplies, six thirty. Uh, those kind of things would be going back. They're all, uh, I would welcome you to look at, uh, the end-of-the-year printout that you can learn more than you ever were scared to ask about where things are, right down to each individual's year, what their function was, how much time, for instance, a blade operator spent blading, how much time he spent mowing, how much time he spent cutting trees, how much time he spent shop time, six fifty. Every individual's hours are in here and including their costs and their overhead that were prorated.
So that's good explanation on, uh, the four sixty surface maintenance, the item four sixty-one that's granular of over six hundred thousand.
That includes the cost of rock there. Cost of rock and getting it there, the manpower and the time, not the truck, but the manpower.
Like, again, you said the truck is...
The labor, the labor... As you look at the claims, as you pay the claims, and the, on the backside of the claims are numbers on every claim, and it, uh, in that case, it should have, like, equipment repair, say, um, MS and Sons, six twenty, and whatever the dollar, that, that number then shows up as in equipment repair in the annual report. Yep. It gets in a, it gets into a slot as an expense, uh, uh, as a claim, or it's labor.
So the granular, it's the rock, and basically the labor to...
To get it there. The blading is the, uh, getting it, the two things that we look at, rock totals for the year, uh, are the shoulders and the, and the, uh, I was gonna tell you that, and I have that. The four sixty-one is the rock that you're looking at. We had three hundred, when you look at, there's two accounts in this book, Eric, it's, uh, the granular, and then you have the payroll. We had three hundred and eighty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars that we paid in claims to buy the rock, and two hundred and twenty thousand six hundred and thirty-eight to get it there.
So if you add those together, that should come up with a six hundred and six thousand.
Six hundred and six thousand four one ninety-five. The other place that we have rock is shoulders on four eighty-two. Um, we had a total of rock of forty-three thousand thirty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents, and the labor on that was, I lose my lines here with bifocals, uh, forty-two, eight forty-five, to give you the, uh, four eighty-two total of eighty, eighty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty cents. But we watched the two rocks. We, we mapped the four sixty-one and the four eighty-two. That's what you'll see at budget time. Total rock for the year is the combination of those, and we used to be down in the three hundred, and then we went to three hundred and fifty thousand, then we went to four hundred thousand. I believe we're at four and a quarter for this current budget where you end for purchasing rock. But every claim that you sign has a place it went. If it says nine oh six, that's a pro rate. That means it'll go back in as an overhead item against any salary, dollar for dollar.
All I know is one of the positive things here, outside engineering, that's very low.
Right, and our outside engineering can fluctuate somewhat. Uh, for instance, when we get right away and need a survey done to lock in the piece, we've done some of that. Uh, we have bridge inspection, which you show, show up there on the last item, and beyond that, we get expertise in at times, uh, when we want, when somebody wants to move two hundred and eighty thousand pounds of something over the bridges, we have our bridge engineer look at that and see if it's safe or not. On those kind of deals, the applicant's paying for it though, but it would show up as an expense and then a reimbursement under the same item.
That category you asked on the, or said on the, is it special sales tax?
Oh, loss funds, yes.
Um, is that Humboldt County's, or do we share that with Humboldt City?
That's our share. That's just the local, uh, that is just secondary road share, uh, and, and, uh, we spend it down to, ugh, I can't re, we didn't spend all of it. We don't spend the loss funds until we have it. So there is a pot in there, and, uh...
You really don't know what you're gonna get, right?
Uh, it's, it's fairly stable lately, um, and, and, and again, I think we budgeted a quarter million for it, and we generally get something more than that, and, uh, and that's, that's why we can spend over half million in two years then.
Could I, you see, is there a tiding project today for old Carmen Jansen, Hunter Mark Peterson?
Yeah.
What time will that be then?
About three minutes.
Nine, I guess, nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Don't run, don't run me out of here, Russ, and then you're up to bat, so...
I approve that FY two thousand seventeen official report for the county engineer.
Have a first?
I will second.
Second?
I have a question here on, on your equipment. The price you got here, that's a purchase price, right?
Yes.
Sometimes could you get us a list of the hours it's on it, the mileage it's on some of that?
Yep, we do that every, we did that in the, you should have it as of January one with your budget packet, and, and we run that every year to look at it, and, and I don't know that we've updated it in between times, but we, we look at that hard and fast every year, and I'm sure you got it, uh, with this budget. We can get a copy of where we're at in January or any up-to-date. We have the accounting software through Solutions that we log. If somebody puts a lot of stuff fifty-two, they log that expense to that truck. That's how we came up with our actual expenses on our, uh, study of what it costs to haul rock, for instance, earlier on. We have all that, Dave. It's easily, easily...
Well, I figured you had it, but I didn't. You know, so you see you have one.
We threw so much, we threw so much at you in January that, yeah, I understand. Uh, we have it all.
Okay, any other questions? Make a motion to approve.
Already got that.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have to, you asked, and then we have questions. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright.
Otherwise, anything that you see on that, uh, it's, it's, uh, we do more of a review re, in reality at budget time, because we're looking at multiple years, uh, and you look at the fuels have gone down again, and that's a great salvation for us, and you'll see that chart again in January when you start budgeting, and, and, uh, that helps us. And down because of winter and down the price, both. If we have a real winter, then it doesn't matter what the fuel costs. It'll be a big item.
Alright, thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Make a motion to...
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
First?
I'll second.
Second, Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Trish is missing. And I brought...
I have a taste, huh?
You gonna take a couple of...
Yeah, I'll see how it tastes this morning.
This is what the pay estimate to, um, Peterson excavating or fight, so you guys are aware of that one.
Thank you, thank you.
You okay, Carl?
You bet.
Thank you.
Number two for work on Peterson excavating for Humboldt, Iowa.
Have you been out there lately, Dave?
I've been working on it, David, while I was eighteen.
I got complaints over the weekend, though.
What areas?
Even had one call this morning at seven o'clock.
About?
The ditch out there, piling the dirt, mud, as he called it up on top, that's gonna wash right back in.
It's got too close to the brown?
That's what ditch, that's what Fisher says.
So is this Peterson, Peterson's reclino?
Yeah.
I'm gonna need to put a number on it.
He has number two, right?
Alright, we're in drainage, so we'll start with DD eleven sub five. And you have, um, your instructed agents in Westergard to prepare a reclassification. Think we talked about this last week? Yep. And it wasn't on the agenda, that we need to separate the ditch from the tile. Correct.
So is that still what your advice is, is the best avenue? I mean...
You're separating the ditch from the subs and the...
The, within sub five, we're separating the open ditch portion from the tile portion, and that will allow people that will be paying for the tile job to be a separate classification. And, uh, as soon as you authorize us to do that, I'll pass you out copies of the pre-class, pre-class.
It'll be quick, John.
Be a quick job, yeah.
So then when I was gonna ask how long you think it's gonna take?
Thirty seconds. Thirty seconds.
You're pretty quick. Well, I'm, I'll make a motion that we instruct you to do it, if you can do it within five seconds.
Yeah, it's taking longer than I think it could off.
I'll make a motion, Lee.
Okay, but first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. This, this will be a pre-class for the tile portion of this job, and the cost that I spread was just our estimated cost of the pre-classification. Whoop, no, I'm sorry. This one has the projected cost of the improvements we've proposed. The one for the entire district will have just for the pre-classification. This represents the people that would be paying for the proposed improvement, and represents the people just on the tile, so.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
When we started, I had a phone call, and it was on my answering machine, and the guy was gonna be gone, he's out of Des Moines, I don't even know who that gentleman is.
Oh, Ross Peeler, probably.
Yeah.
My guess.
And his acres, he was confused about his acres had changed, and I've heard some comments from other people too, that some of these acres have changed.
Yes.
How did that change without an annexation?
This, keep in mind, this is still just a pre-class. We'll do any annexation we need to do yet to get that straightened out, so.
Okay, I think you're talking about two different things, 'cause I'm, you know, and I really am uncomfortable talking for Ross. In two thousand and eleven, when this came up, Archer Properties had one acre, then did the annexation, and the annexation of Archer Properties was twenty-six point two, I believe, and I had discussions looking at the two thousand and eleven and two thousand and seventeen stuff, and was thinking that Archer Properties would have twenty-seven point two, and then when you came out with the classification, it was like fifty-one acres, and I think that's where Ross Peeler's question's coming from.
Okay, that is more than likely the boundary change due to watershed, and.
In two thousand and fifteen?
Yes.
Okay, and looking at that data, and I looked at it for our farm, and ours went from three oh five to three oh eight something, and there was no way to figure out if, you know, and I sort of assumed that most of that is all in sub five for our farm, but certainly for Archer Properties, there was no way to figure out, because it was just all lumped in and grainy district eleven, and it's like, yeah, lands and a lot.
Yeah.
To figure out how the boundaries were changing in sub five.
Yep.
And I think that's his question.
Yes, and we'll, we'll be getting a summary of that, but this, the attempt here is to get it as accurate as possible, and that's why it's stamped draft, because it's trying to get all the acres right with the dollar amounts right, but I believe there'll be another annexation report to adjust those, just like we're talking about.
So, why the boundaries change? What happened there?
Uh, well, it's.
Waters, you know, it's a bit of a.
Yeah, here's what's happened. In nineteen ten or whatever, on horseback, they went out and tried to evaluate.
EPS?
Yes.
Not that much.
Yep, yep, so we, there's downloading available to get all the elevations on this ground. LiDAR is the common one they use, and that's what we've used, and we now have software to use that LiDAR to get the boundary accurate. So, we're seeing that in just about every reclass we do now, that, that there is boundary adjustment, and there'll be another report to take care of that.
One of the difficulties, I guess, with the report in two thousand and fifteen was there were no maps. There were changes in acres, but there were no maps to understand what was falling in sub five or.
Right.
Another sub-district or pulling from another sub-district of, you know, I mean, if you've read the data, you, you know, something's slightly changed, but you couldn't help it.
Yeah, it's the watershed based on LiDAR, using the software to come up with the watershed, and we just haven't taken the step to do that report yet at this point, but we've taken.
But it's the sub-districts that generate the cost.
Right.
And that's what feels like you did the reclassification, but who could, in a meaningful way, interpret that and realize that it was gonna have a dollar impact on, you know, an improvement which we're now facing in sub five?
And the.
And that's, I, I, I think that's kind of the rub.
Okay, well, the pre-classification was giving it accurate for discussions regarding the proposed improvements, so that was prepared, but there does still need to be another report for annexation, and we'll, we, we have mapping to do that, so, and that's why you see a difference in the acres is because of the difference in the watershed. We tried to get it accurate at this point, so people would know what their end result in payment would be, so. All right, I understand that now.
Yeah, the maps with the visual contours are incredibly helpful, I think, to get that clear, and that didn't come with it two thousand and fifteen.
Yes, because it was just a pre-classification, not an annexation report, and I, just in the last six months, we've probably done two or three of those in counties where we have a map of the watershed, and then we put in red the ones that are affected by using LiDAR and software to redo the boundary, so. It'll all become official, we're not even sure yet if this is gonna be a project, I guess, is part of the hangup, but.
Right, on the, Amal, total assessment?
Mm-hmm.
That, like you said about, you know, no one knows about the official project, but this is based on that project?
Yes, to give people an idea what they'd be paying, yes.
Based on that?
Million, one hundred thousand.
Right.
You can talk to that, Russ?
Probably not sure.
So, the next question is. This reclassification, this is a tile, you have one for the ditch, this is.
The ditch portion of sub five will not be paying anything towards this project.
Okay, so there's some people in that district that are only in the ditch portion, is that correct?
Correct, yes, quite a few, correct.
Okay, so obviously, yeah, that means, you know, through all this, that segregates the ditch to ditch.
That, yes. If this reclassification is made formal by meeting with the commissioners and getting signatures, it can be effective in forty days after that. That's gonna be one decision that's gonna be discussed, is do we back off long enough to get this reclassification formalized?
For?
For a hearing on the tile project?
Already backed that off?
Yeah.
Sid can't even ask this, but to get this formalized, reclassification, is that gonna push the hearing back even further?
As far as official approval, I think so. Here's the deal, this is to try and get the information together so people know what the cost might be, so they should, can figure out where, what, whether they want it or not.
Correct.
Okay, but officially, the tile and the open ditch are still together.
So, it makes it officially they are not.
Right, so right now, everybody either on the ditch or the tile have a vote as far as remonstrance.
On this?
Yeah.
On the tile project?
Yeah.
No, the classification.
Well, right, no, I understand. Oh, okay.
Right now, if you don't move forward with this, it's combined.
Right.
So, they'll have a vote on the tile project.
Correct.
Not broke out.
Right, correct, correct.
If this is approved, only these folks have a vote on the.
Correct, correct. Now, here's, this is complicated further be, because of them looking at a possible private job that would drain into sub one of eleven, because if they do that project, we're recommending a reclassification of all of sub five, so that everybody in sub five would help pay for that, in the end, that East project, because we're taking half the water off of sub five and putting it over on sub one. But that's where you got the big hurdle of annexation and other considerations to deal with. So, this is about as messy as they get, but.
Yeah, that's a good term.
Yeah.
It is, it's not very, it's not very cut and dry.
No, no, it's, oh.
So, then once they decide if they aren't gonna, they are or they aren't gonna go private, we'll throw that hand out, so it's like they get to drive along and figure that, see what the costs are, if they don't like that, we'll do away with that, and then we can decide yea or nay on the project.
Yeah, and I know there's controversy over the private, because a breakdown that was provided to people looking at that one has a couple of landowners not paying anything, so I have personally heard from at least one landowner saying, "Not fair." So, then, for that reason, and also there is an objection to the pipe downstream. I look back, in nineteen ninety-six, we did a re, a letter stating that that eighty-four inch would be acceptable. There's, at heavy flow times, water backs up some, but those pipe are usually designed for two-inch coefficient, which is about all the ditches will carry. So, if there's any plugging or anything, yeah, it'll back up. I know that a landowner had Atler look at that pipe, and Kermit and I are gonna go over that a little bit, because my, all I got from Atler was just that they had looked at it and found something similar to what I had, but now you're adding eight hundred thirty-some acres or eight hundred and seventy-five acres to it, so what coefficient is acceptable through that road? It's a gravel road, we usually go with a two-inch as a minimum size that will work. The regulations, the secondary roads gotta go by, usually ends up a little bit bigger pipe, but we figured the eighty-four inch was adequate, so that'll need to be looked at.
Is the eighty-four, that's your original one right now yet?
Uh, it's in there now.
Okay, the eighty-four inch?
Yeah, it's, it's the one if you go, that east-west, sub ditch?
Yeah, I know where the sub there is.
Okay, yeah, if you go north from there, it's the first culvert to the north, so. I, I hadn't looked back far enough when somebody said, "Well, you guys looked at this," so I went back five or six years and.
What you're saying, by adding this eight hundred and seventy-five acres going through the, through the culvert on the road, that would still basically handle it?
It'd be a little.
A little trick than handle downstream or something.
It'll basically be less than we typically go for.
Okay, it'd be a little bit under.
Yeah, yeah. I, I haven't sized it based on the eight hundred acres extra, what, what that would do to it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so, we're kinda, we take a step, half a step back, we take a step, half a step back, so, yeah, we're going ahead, you're going ahead with the hearing, only you've determined already that there should be more time with this, um, yeah, it's just.
Well, you know, this is the, we continue to put more water in our ditches, which continues to go towards around here, the Des Moines River, which continues to fill in, which causes it to expand when we have a lot of water. At what point is the state gonna say, "You know, we're putting all this water into a, basically, a flat, you know, from seventeen years in the Des Moines River in my backyard, we used to be able to have boats and whatever, now you can run a canoe up and down it because of the silt that's come down there," so that thing, it keeps expanding out for, you know, and we just keep dumping more water in it when we have, last night, we got a little bit of, I don't know if it was running in the tiles, it wasn't that thick, but, you know, it's one of those deals that, at what point is the river gonna be?
The channel, basically, you're talking.
Yeah. The only thing I would say, I guess, is tile systems usually help the surge.
Right.
Because they're creating a reservoir within the soil.
Baffling.
Yeah, yeah, so, but the surface water, yeah, getting it there faster creates all kinds of problems downstream.
They get all of the, damn, they end up doing all of that, that's what happens.
Well, and that's, you guys have agreed to go to what we're calling the clean water area drains now. Instead of the fifteen-inch intakes and knock on wood, we haven't had a single call saying those aren't working.
That's good.
Yeah, that's really good, 'cause some of them have been in a couple of years at least, so that will help the silt issue.
They're gonna have them in there and rains for a couple of years.
Not late, not, yeah.
What kind of an intake would this need? Would it be just crushed rock?
Actually, it's just, what we do is we put in several tile laterals really close together, like five feet apart.
Okay.
In a concentrated area, and they've been working.
Right.
Yeah, now, if it's real tight soil, then we add rock. Yeah, we have one in Dickinson County that's very slow, just because it's such tight soil, but.
That's usually where intakes are located.
Yeah.
Okabogi, harps.
Yep, there you go.
Poorly drained. Down the order. Yeah, that stuff is about like asphalt to begin with.
Yeah.
But even in those areas?
Yeah, these have been working.
They've been working?
Yeah, and just because of what, it's like, it's like the pattern tiling you see, once the pores are established and everything, they're what, fifty, sixty, eighty feet apart? We put these no more than ten feet apart, and at least fifty feet long in the concentrated area, so it's the same principle, you know, the earthworms and all of that, getting the pores established. They work better the second, third year than they do the first year, so that's, since they worked the first year, that's probably why we haven't heard anything on them since, but things like that you are doing to help. And we've helped DNR River Cleanup for seven, eight years now, and all over the state, and unfortunately, we're in a location with all this rich soil, and the riverbanks are extremely erodible, so it's always trying to meander.
That's where a good shit of erosion comes from, just the riverbanks moving.
Yes, yes, we've worked in northeast Iowa before, and on there with all the rock, you can see the bottom, the rivers.
The rivers don't move like ours do.
No, that's right, that's right, so, I get, as a county, you're trying to do some things to help, but if, when you create more surface water, yeah, you're, you're adding to the problems everywhere downstream.
That's good discussion, that's a good point, but it's good discussion to have that, because this, we're talking at this point, the subject, this tile project, the reclassification of said lands in the tile project, so we're at, this needs to be brought before room rep?
Well, the commissioners, to, to make this formal, and, and that's what I would do, is, and then I'd go in and explain any adjustments we've made, they'd review the soils and what we have for points on them, and then we could do a signed report and make it official.
So, I'm just trying to get this somewhat chronological, so we're at point of, of this classification, reclassification, correct?
Yeah.
This mainly is just on the tile?
Right, well, yeah.
Or at the point separating the two?
Yeah, separating the two.
Get this accomplished, like Bruce brought up, a couple of points, you know, where there's a lot of, there's way too much stuff floating around out there.
Yeah.
We have to get to the end result.
We gotta get to some level where we push back the formal hearing to October second, I get the idea this is gonna push it back further than that, because this needs to be accomplished before any formal hearing, obviously?
Yeah, the, I'm just, I haven't thought this through completely, but I would hope, just with the point we are in crops, that I could get together with commissioners in the next few days.
Right.
And, and formally review this and then make any adjustments AC fit, and then I can get on the agenda to. And then I can get on the agenda to bring it to you to set a hearing on the reclassification.
On the reclassification, that takes 40 days from the set time to the hearing?
Yes.
That's already pushed this back past October 2nd, original hearing date.
There's so much going on behind the scenes with this one, too. Landowners tucking each other and...
There is a lot of, I have a little information on, on that district. But I mean, we have to do what we have to do. It's just, it's fair, just, and correct to get this taken care of?
I think that's your best avenue to follow, is to get this taken care of so that when it does come to a vote or whatever on remonstrance...
The people who are paying are the ones who are voting.
Exactly.
Right. I mean, I'm not arguing that, I'm just arguing that I think, unfortunately, we've lapped this, not having this done. And obviously, I think it's just a week or so ago that we discussed it. But I mean, if we have to do it, you have to do it. So it is, want it to be right and want it to be fair and correct to everyone involved. So that's what, that's what I'm saying, we have to move forward with this.
Yes, I, I think that's the best avenue. I'd be interested, Kermit, any thoughts on that?
No, okay.
Okay.
Now, did you just say a certain manner of speaking that you could get, met with the commissioners? Quick enough, soon enough, to actually get this on the agenda within, if not next week, the following?
I think so, yeah, 'cause all I have to do is have my documentation of how we did this and any adjustments we made, and then I need to get an appointment with the commissioners and sit down and do this.
And then, once that takes place, to get back on the drainage agenda, possibility of setting the hearing date, which would be 40 days from the setting of?
Yes.
So, we still might make that date?
Well, it's close, it'd be close. Let me see, I'll try and call the commissioners today yet.
It would be awesome to coincide with the original set date, which I believe is October 2nd?
I don't remember.
Well, that's the one that went out 40. That's the one that went out 40?
The 2nd?
I think so.
We instruct Rick to expedite this meeting with the commissioners and even get it by next week's agenda, then that might be possible.
What's the secret about the October 2nd?
We set our, uh, the hearing date for this project.
Why do you have to go to the 7th?
Oh, that's not so bad. I'm just afraid that's gonna push it way far back.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just to get it to the 40 days so that we can get the thing continued to move forward.
Yeah, without pushing it back to, who the heck knows?
Let's see, they're gonna be the 2nd or the 7th?
No, the 7th, a week is a little critical, but three months and dragging it on.
How, uh, how do we, do we need a motion to do this?
No, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
You're gonna get it in their hands and figure out?
Once, once we get the reclassification done, then we can set the hearing date.
Yeah, and if, and if I know I'm gonna have it, I'll, I'll try and let Piggy know by noon Thursday?
Did anybody do the math that it, that we, I'm not, you know, if it's possible that it was set by a week from now? Are we still in 40 days to the?
Oh, you got 30 days in September, and then you add another six, it's 36. Yeah, we'll be fine. Could be a problem.
I mean, maintaining the 2nd, at worst, the 7th. That's kinda, I mean, that's theoretically, I think, what we should be shooting for.
Here's what I wrote for my note to myself, "Meet with commissioners this week for Sub 5 of 11 reclass, get on agenda for next week." That's what we're...
Yeah, right line of what we're discussing.
Well, originally, it was on the agenda for 9 o'clock for, but it was pushed back because of the group that wanted. So it's been pushed so many times, can't remember my cross-out versus whether it's still active.
All right, let's move on.
Okay.
Um, anyway, group pays on number 2 to Petersons.
I will make the motion.
How much is it amount for?
Eighteen thousand.
I don't remember if eighteen...
Fifteen thousand and ninety cents.
Ninety cents, yeah. I'll make that motion, we have, that was our amended agenda re- reason, would I make the motion? We'd make that payment to Peterson for eighteen oh, 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 ninety cents?
It seems a lot that came off that way, but it's, we had it, we figured it out.
First and second, hold on, favor.
Aye.
Anything else in drainage?
Yes, um, DD 38 by Rutland. The, Doug Marso exposed the tile on each end of it, we shot it, we came back and staked it. But then, when he saw the cuts, what, we reworked the slopes and didn't go a straight grade because it's like, it's amazing slope available. So he's gonna, from the large main, he's gonna come up fairly quickly and then still put good slope on the rest of it. Exactly.
So it's covered by the trestle of thorns and stuff?
Yes, yeah, should absolutely take care of it, he's far enough north. He mowed down corn, we've got our elevations, uh, we came back Friday and got ground elevations so we can work with him on the actual profile it's gonna be installed at, so...
So then, will this also hopefully give us the opportunity on the other side over where Ron, uh, was, Collins was said has backed up over on his side? Doesn't that come together from the other direction?
Yes, yes, and Doug explored at the road crossings, and I haven't heard any results on what he's found.
I didn't know if you didn't talk to him.
No, not about that, yet, so... But he has done enough exploring, he thought that he could come up with what's going on there, so...
And that'll be a possibility?
Yes, yeah.
Thanks, Kermit.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ross.
Anything else?
Uh, yeah, um... Let's see, so, uh, you're aware that the 125 pond has started?
Yeah.
We saw it.
Yeah, I was trying to leave early enough to go by there coming down, but I didn't get there, I'm gonna get there yet today. I don't know how much rain they got there, the soils were actually very dry, so...
Probably too dry to even pass.
Yes, hard, it was, they had to be careful to get compaction, and we're testing compaction on that, to be sure they get it, so there won't be any problems. Gary Nave called me just before I got here this morning, he's concerned with tile he has coming from the west. I'm quite sure we got elevations on those and we're fine. If not, he says there's a lot of slope on those and they can just be relayed so that they're above the water level in, behind the dam. So, um, that's something we'll just have to verify yet and take care of. I believe we had elevations on it and we're fine, but if not, we'll relay some pipe there and get that taken care of.
Got the ones that go in that grid system, that are great across the road? Uh, this'll be on the east side of the road.
Yeah, yes, it's back a ways from the road, yeah, yeah. Bruce, have you gotten out there?
Well, we all drove by it.
Oh, we're off to Thursday.
Oh, okay, you did a tour, okay, okay.
We took a little tour and drove by, and they had machines running here, there, and everywhere.
Dirt like crazy.
Yeah, they're, they're a very efficient operation dirt-wise, and we were delighted to have the GPS-controlled equipment because then we just give them, they call it a layer, I can't remember all the terms, but it, it basically is finished elevations GPS-wise, and then they just build it to that almost automatically, I mean...
You know, that's a lot, stake a whole bunch of stuff.
Exactly, all we had to do is give them four control points, just a fraction of what would be involved for stating otherwise.
Because they don't let their depth and swolp and everything, it's gonna be with their equipment.
Yep, and they're coordinating with Denver as far as the pipe work on it. There's a one pipe that goes down under the dam for, if you ever need to completely drain the pond in the future, you can, using that. We've got a valved pipe on the very bottom, so...
It'll be interesting sometime to go out and, I mean, observe, see.
Yes.
As opposed to, you can't see a whole lot from up above, but I, and I don't wanna go out and get in the way of it. It's really kind of neat to watch how that thing is progressing, so...
Yes, yes, I'm anxious to get out there today myself, so I can take a look at it.
If Jason flies drone over it?
Yeah, and I, I, we flew downstream on DD 3, I was, I swear it was 3 you said there was a problem downstream on where the, the ditch crosses diagonally in the corner of a section? He couldn't see anything with the drone.
Drive his truck out there, he'll find it.
Okay, that's what he said.
My, my told him it was pickup though, he falls.
Okay.
Drive slow.
Down the north side of the bank.
Okay, I'm sure I told him that, but he, he flew it not very high, he said, and I was, it's, we've got, he's already got it posted on YouTube. If you go to YouTube and then search Jacobson Westergaard, you can see that flight. He also flew DD 4 downstream, and there's a curve, a sharp curve where there's some issues with erosion, yeah. And we'll have to wait till we can get back in there and get some more elevations and things, but he flew that also, so that's online and available. They've started on DD 3, I'm going out to meet with the contractor after I'm finished here. It's like they're trying to set a speed record on how fast they can clean a ditch, and it's, looks ugly. So, I talked to the project manager who was on site. They have two guys on site and they're, they haven't been checking grades, we have. They were high, so they gotta go back. We don't like the shape they're doing it in, and I believe they're digging so fast that most of the dirt is coming right back out of the bucket. I'm gonna go out, they're not gonna be here till about 11 today, and I...
You're gonna have a few words with them?
Yes, yes.
How several, two to the contractor?
How much have they done?
Like 2,600 feet in three days? Yikes, I said to the guy when I called him, I said, "You've done three times," no, maybe not, I exaggerate a little, "You've gone three times as far as anybody's ever gone in this length of time on a ditch. It's not right, something's wrong." Well, we got a bigger bucket, we got a bigger machine. And, and then, I must've got his attention because he called the owner, and the owner called me Sunday, and, or Saturday, and said, "Do I need to come down there?" I said, "More than likely, but let me talk to your guy in the field first and see where we get."
What's up with the complaint you had?
Yeah, I'm laying on it, so 7 o'clock this morning and I got a call. Said it looked like the mud that's swinging up on the shoulder was just gonna run right back in.
Well, it's, I haven't been there firsthand, I'm going there today, but our inspector, we've had people there all three days, talking to them, and they said, the, the inspector gave, showed me pictures, "It's ugly." I mean, it's, it, yeah.
Maybe take him somewhere where someone else is working, show him, this is how it's supposed to look.
Yes, yes. Well, they are just, one excuse they're using, "Well, it's just sloppy," it's, well, yeah, I mean, it's silt, it's washed in. Bottom, the old bottom will be hard, but the rest of it's gonna be real soft. It's setting in water, for crying out loud. So, I told him that we may not be paying for any of the work they've done. My further argument is, we're not only not gonna pay you, we're gonna charge you for damage to the ditch. So, we'll have the owner down here probably tomorrow.
Not only that, if they have to go backwards and where are they gonna set your machine when you got stuff on up there? Next slop, it's not gonna be a pretty deal.
No, it's not, it's not, no. Thank God they've only been at it three days.
Huge.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
I was over that way and I seen the machine and it was at 8 o'clock at night and it was still working.
Yeah, well, they come down, they drive down this morning, they don't think they'd be here till 10:30 or 11:00, and then they leave in time Friday to get home a reasonable hour, normal quitting time, basically. So they spend long hours while they're here.
Well, that's their prerogative.
Oh, yeah.
Doesn't have much to do with the work, does it?
No, no, they could, yeah.
Who's the contractor on this?
Your key.
Your key?
Yeah, super, great reverences. And, but...
Strong operator.
Yeah, yeah.
Get after him, Rick.
Oh, absolutely, I, that's why I called him right away when our inspector came in with the pictures and told him, "It looks terrible." Well, you can imagine in that slop, you have to dig slow to keep that in your bucket.
Yeah.
And otherwise, all you end up with is water, so...
And you slop it all the way to the bank and then it runs right back in the...
Yes.
We could use the moisture up on top, but we don't...
You gotta take due time to do it correctly and it goes out like they're not.
Year and a half after filling it back.
Yeah, so, we'll get that remedied, uh, whether it means somebody else coming in or what. I think the owner is concerned enough that he'll come down, well, he'll be concerned enough after the day.
Stay in touch with somebody that knows how that medium tracks works.
Yes, will do, yeah. Couple of young guys trying to make fast progress to look good, I'm sure, the boss's eyes, so, we'll...
We don't mind that, other than the fact that we want it done the way we hired it to be done.
Exactly, exactly, so, yeah.
I had a guy stop Saturday, wanted to know why we didn't go on across Washington up northeast. He said that up there, it's the top of the tiles are about that far from the top of the water.
He's talking that bridge that runs up to the northeast?
The branch that runs across, under the bridge and on up.
Well, yeah, I guess it just wasn't part of the study, it was, the main was studied. Now, that's something that could easily be looked at and get somebody in there hourly maybe.
We could have somebody locally do that.
Yeah.
I think it'd be a good idea to get somebody locally to do it.
Yeah.
If it's in need.
What, it's about a mile?
Something like that, yeah, yeah.
I, I drove that one, I drove the other one of them.
I haven't driven that, we'll get down that.
He said there's some pretty good-sized tiles in there, that's just, just about underwater.
Okay, well, if we can get, okay, if we can get the main taken care of, that'll give it a better outlet for that ditch, so... That'd be the time to do it, definitely, the water will get away then, so...
If we ever get water.
We got 2 inches at home, and yeah.
This morning?
Yeah, last night, started about 11 o'clock.
No, it was...
How much?
Eight pounds.
Scott Peterson called me this morning and said, "Don't send your guys down to stake today, it's muddy." He said it rained about 5 o'clock down there on DD 6?
Yeah, it was early this morning.
4:30, I got up and closed the windows out in our, because it was raining in the patio.
Okay.
Forgot to wrap, well, we haven't needed it.
Yeah, for days. Well, he's, he was concerned that we got a trip down here and didn't make much progress. That, just, that's a good point to make with you, too, the, on DD 6, they're very close to finishing lateral B, the pipe that goes north. They're gonna put two crews on the main now, that, the one that goes mostly east. This always scares me, but we're gonna check it two or three times. They're digging, starting at the tile.
Bringing it to them?
Yeah, and then he's gonna start another crew.
Further upstream.
Further upstream.
Oh.
Scares me to death, but we will, we're gonna check it two or three times from the hubs on where the first crew is going to where the second crew is starting.
How do they make their joint?
It's out of structure. They're gonna do it out of structure.
Oh, that makes more sense.
Yeah, these guys think of things, and I'm glad you guys are thinking that, too. Yeah, how do you, how do you put two tongue and groove pipes together?
Yeah.
No, they're gonna do it out of structure, so... And he wants some stakes out there for centerline so that they can deliver a pipe. And he was hoping to have pipe coming tomorrow, but probably be the next day now, so...
Are we staying with, pipes being delivered and keeping them working?
Yes, yes, yeah, they're, they're keeping up at this point, and, and Scott is looking ahead to get it out there for his second crew to be able to get in there and go, so... I love working with those guys, they're just... Yeah, they're very conscientious, they don't rake you over the holes if there's some change for something. They're there, I just can't say enough positive about them, so...
You have a bunch of people.
Yes, you bet, so... We have talked to a contractor, I won't be able to remember his name, a young guy that you've had doing some cleanout on DD 6.
Oh, Myers?
Myers, yeah, that's it.
Brandon?
Brandon, yeah. We've been talking to him, I don't know if our inspector got a drawing to him yet or not, but they've been communicating, and we've been, gonna go out and mark the locations that need the spot cleanouts because we did a survey, oh, three or four years ago, I think. He did some work, now it's time for him to come back in and do more of it, so... That's getting coordinated with him. And he'll be out there, he's finishing up some work somewhere else at this point.
So, back over to the Thor area, you anticipate them, this being right on schedule? Are we at a schedule, are we, especially if they put two crews in that moment?
Oh, pretty much on schedule, actually, I thought they'd be a little faster, I mean, they're on schedule, fine. They're, they're gonna finish okay, but with their equipment problems and thing, that slowed them down.
The majority is... Are the majority, is the majority of this gonna be done before farmers start?
Yes.
I mean, the way their corn is firing, oh my God, I can't believe when you look out there and see some of that stuff is really...of course, it's burning, burning's the bad from no water.
Mm-hmm.
You know how our friendly farmers are when they get that itch, and it's time to go, because it's gonna be brittle, I guess, I just-
I believe it.
Wondering how we're setting for that. You know?
Yeah.
One and a half dozen the other if they...but I'm sure they'll work.
The only thing in our favor is that this...these crews are so efficient. If we have a road shut down, it's gonna be for one day, and they'll have it back.
They aren't from Sioux Falls, you know, they aren't coming from Sioux Falls, and they started at seven o'clock like a normal day, and-
Right, because I had a call from Scott Peterson by seven thirty, and he'd been out on the job, and, yeah.
Well, I'm sure they're progressing at a good rate.
Yes, they are, they're doing very well, everybody knows their job, it's just a joy to work with those guys, so...that's all I gotta think.
All righty, I have something. Can we utilize the map on the wall?
Sure.
That's mine.
Oh, yeah, it's mine. Yes, okay, good.
So, and it...because you are working on this with Bill Mansky.
Yes.
We have discussion on, the line's going right here.
Mm-hmm.
If we get more definitive information on that, and as far as that goes, depth of tile a bit away from the actual well, make sure that it didn't, you know, die down into it, to see if this can be maintained relatively close to this initial plan versus going over here, which is exponentially more expensive, this project's already bid.
Yeah.
I'm just asking the question, if you've got any information on that.
I didn't bring this up because I don't have answers, Bill Mansky and I talked last week.
Really?
And I talked to Brian Yemlin about digging up the tile further away from the ag well to see if they dive in, hoping they did. Well, before he could get out there, Bill Mansky called him and said he'd been out there checking elevations. Don't know what he found.
Okay.
And I'm not sure what he's checking without digging more up, but if he maybe got down in that well and shined light up and see-
It may not...that in itself may not be appreciably different, because not always do they do that.
Right.
But who the heck knows, because how long ago that was done, no one knows, we'd check it.
Right.
That, and then-
Shoot, sorry, how do I shut that off?
The discussion of, yeah, there's some limestone there, and it may take, you know, some extracurricular, get rid of limestone, but need to get a definitive answer, is it just a very few hundred feet that does not bury much needed additional depth to, you know?
Where is the limestone the issue?
Okay, a couple of places, really.
Is it on that main, more the main that goes to Louis' well?
No, Louis' is well...Louis' is high enough you can get above the limestone, you can serve Louis' just fine, because his tile are high enough. Okay? Let me look at the numbers here.
So, why can't you go on the north side of the road and just go over to that well and avoid the one?
Well, because we hit limestone over here, too.
No, I'm talking from Louis' there.
On the north?
Yeah, go right from Louis' well over to the geis well.
We didn't dig here, but there's...the way the drain is, it's excessive cut, is part of the reason they went down here. Here, right here, it's eleven fifty-four point five six, that's the same elevation or above the tile that come into this. So, there's a problem right here. This is where we dug it up early on. That is still, even though that's high, the elevations in Louis' are high enough, we can get over the top of it. But we can't over here, because if you put any fall on it coming this way, or up here, you'd get into the limestone. Here's eleven fifty-four point five six, here's eleven fifty-three point nine, fifty-three point eight, fifty-two. Now, this is starting to get down to the point you might get over it. From here down, no problem, and from here to Louis', no problem, because you can raise it so high to be above the limestone.
But that's the limestone height you're giving us, that those measurements?
Yes.
So, but when you say those limestone heights, do you know how...what thickness is, or do you just go to the top?
Just go to the top.
I mean, what if it's just six inches?
I guess we haven't ever come across that.
Because, like, you said it the other day, if it's not a very thick, you know, it's just a shell, or a shelf coming off there that, you know, you break through that and or underneath it.
That, one, and my...yeah, that's, you know, at that, I'm not a geologist by any stretch, but that and/or the elevation is that, you know, there's a difference between a hundred feet and a thousand feet, you know? We're assuming solid limestone, that you could excavate it out, if you excavate a hundred feet, yeah, that's gonna add a little bit of cost, but it's not gonna add two hundred and some thousand dollars cost.
Well, depending, if it's a hundred feet and we're able to clean that out and make our connection, run it through the hundred feet, we take the hit.
Yeah.
But if it's a thousand, are we better surf one the other direction?
Well, that's what we gotta find out, because there's humongous, you know, we're letting...and Rick made a good point, can you go a different route?
Yeah. Well, okay, right here in the south road ditch, we're fine, but you just get this far, and it's...the limestone's at least six feet higher, we've never even found it here. We're six feet deeper here, never did get limestone than we are here, so...and then, these elevations are almost identical, so you got this that's too high. You might be able to clear...let's see, this is eleven fifty-four. Now, you might be able to clear it till you get over here, because now this limestone is at fifty-four point four. We just were a few hundred feet apart on some of these. Fifty-four, fifty-three point nine, fifty-three point eight, fifty-two point five, now we're down to forty-eight, so...what...what we probably need to do is put a profile on this with the limestone elevation shown, and see what it takes. Now, I'd like to get a hold of Mansky, see what he found. I gather he found something out there, um, yeah, I'm not sure what, but he told Brian he didn't need to dig.
But was he just exploring around the ag well?
I don't know.
Well, I mean, I don't wanna get after anyone in particular, but-
No.
We need better communication here-
Yep.
Because, you know, you've done all that, and, you know, you and Bill worked together, we don't wanna lose-
Well, we told him about these elevations.
Yep, and he, you know, and then you actually went out and did some exploratory work on the, I call it the, you call it east-west there, where we left, the proposed route.
Yes.
And, so, yeah, I mean, we need to...what did he find? Is there more than better options? Like you say, this is really simplistic, but, you know, if it's a hundred foot that screws up the elevation, and you can chew through that, I prefer dynamite, I'm sure that I see stuff blowing up, and I don't want to use that.
I'd love to see some more of that.
But, dynamite aside, even jackhammerish type thing that can break through whatever the needed depth, and if it's not that far, yeah, it adds a bit of cost, but to explore that, to say definitively, versus sending that well to the east, to that other project, there's just a humongous dollar difference.
Well, we still have limestone to battle here. When we...after we've looked at lowering this grade, we still have some problems with limestone for a distance here, so, east isn't necessarily the answer either.
No.
And a couple miles east of here, yes, it added a lot of cost, but DD two, Shanie was able to dig through the limestone, and that was a lot longer stretch than we have here.
Well, maybe that.
You know, this has limestone, doesn't mean you can't dig through it.
Exactly.
You know, dig, blast, jackhammer, whatever the method.
Quite often the top is kinda crumbling.
Yeah, depend upon the needed depth to get there, and like you said, I mean, none of us are geologists until you really get down there. If you were really lucky, it'd be a six inch layer that'd break through.
Break through.
Break through, I mean, I know, Rick, you know, Ferris, you've done this a lot of years, you don't usually fight that, it's usually-
Can happen.
But regardless, I mean, we need to get these answers.
I did email Bill late last week and didn't hear back from him yet, and I haven't been on the computer since then, so, he's probably responded, I'm hoping.
Hope that you keep that communication, so you know what he did, and he knows what you're doing, and-
Exactly.
That's how we're gonna get this answer.
Yep, yep.
But the issue we have, I need to sign that contract, huh?
Yeah, we want that, yeah.
So, I'll...should I sign that? I didn't sign it last week.
I think you should, because I think they're gonna figure something out this way.
So, something else is gonna go the other way, I'll get it signed, and we'll...
Yeah.
Other than that, you know, I know we went through it, like you said, Rick, there's a contract for you to sign. Best case scenario, it's gonna add some cost, does that-
Well, the thing is, if I sign that contract, they're gonna start ordering materials. Now, you ordered materials, now you wanna upsize it, so now you got all this material in there.
And we don't wanna get in that program and add more cost, or unknown cost, so...
Well, I think before we sign that, don't you think it'd be better to have...this, Rick?
My clock's ticking, though, I've only got two weeks left before I'm back.
I understand, but what I'm saying is, he orders thirty-six, and we're bringing more water towards it, and they have to go to a forty-two, I'm sure it's just paper swap, but for pretext or format, whatever their name is down there now, when they say, "Oh, we got X amount of thirty-sixes already made, so we don't have to make them," but now all of a sudden it goes up to a forty-two, and they're bringing them from west Des Moines, that's a huge cost, bringing them from down at one of their other plants, and all of a sudden, that much pipe has to be brought.
Well, that's a very good point, if that would happen, but if the proposed that we're looking at, we can get the elevations correct, I mean, it's already engineered, it's already bid based on that, so, we get the depth, and I mean, that would not change the size of anything, correct, Rick? If we can get the elevations, the needed elevation, now would not change any pipe size.
Right, that's correct, and we already did dig out of like ten feet away from these as part of our instructions to the contractor previously, and it is about six inches higher.
I mean, any more of that-
That's right, every...that might keep us out of some of the limestone.
Or maybe not out, but very little down. I heard through the great by Scuttlebutt, wasn't it, Yemlin that did the exploratory digging? There again, he's not gonna be on record, but maybe it isn't as long or as much of a cut needed, kind of his opinion of look, you know, being out there doing exploratory stuff, so, we really gotta take a darn hard look at this really quick.
I'm hoping Bill and I can communicate yet today.
That would be awesome.
Hopefully, he's emailed me, when I get, soon as I get back to the office, I'll get on the computer and see if he's emailed me, if not, I'll call him.
So, back to Rick's question, sign it?
I feel, I feel pretty certain that one way or another, we're gonna go this way.
All right. And also, pretty good case scenario, doesn't take a whole lot more to do that, no pipe upcycling, good point. Sign the contract, knowing probably gonna be something additional, it's not a big deal.
Good summary, I think.
I mean, it's what I asked him.
On the other one, there shouldn't be any additional cost.
No.
On the Holland project, it's figured, it's-
Well-
No change orders.
But I'm talking about if this gets, the information gets figured out, and that, let's just say there's a few hundred feet that you need to do a little extra, get that limestone in one way, shape, or form, that's certainly gonna add-
That's on Mansky's deal, this has nothing to do with Holland. We're...I'm talking to Holland contract on the other route.
Okay, so, okay, sorry, okay, so, if that, if everything we're talking about, going, getting that figured out, then yes, it wouldn't add anything on Holland.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
They probably got a rock clause in there anyway, don't they?
Probably.
I mean, if they come across-
I've seen-
If they, they have to choose a look, I mean, it's gonna cost somewhat.
Yeah.
They aren't gonna do it for, you know-
Right.
Okay, so, yeah, to keep them separate, the one you're signing is the other-
The other project, yeah.
So, we should be pretty safe on that.
That's what I wanted to know.
We're hoping on the best case scenario, the one we're talking about.
Yeah, hopefully, there's minimal electric cost, that we can raise the tile enough that we can still serve them and minimize-
Blast through some limestone, probably some blasting going on there.
Guy in the ambulance was a contractor that loved to do blasting, and he kept asking every year, "Aren't you gonna have one that we need to blast this year?" I don't think so.
I think that gives you a little more security, signing the contract.
Okay, yeah.
Well, there's the headlines, Kent, supervisor's looking for dynamite.
Yep. Maybe there's somebody to call.
Yeah.
Well, you're on dynamite.
No.
That screws up well, you dynamite out here, and it screws up well for miles around, okay, well, I'd say, away from dynamiting them, but I...
The last limestone we did in this general area, they were, it was hard, but they were able to dig into it with just teeth on their butt.
There you go.
Okay.
Good discussion.
Anything else for us?
I have a question on the airway project, I guess, uh, DD eleven sub five. I don't know whether this is going to be pursued as a private project, but I guess if it's pursued as a private project, is there criteria that would need to be met? And I assume the answer is yes, and what would that be, that at the completion of the project, that the drainage position would take the project back and administer it in the future?
Well, it's a matter of what type of installation you approve.
Typically, we don't. Have we ever done that? Anyone's knowledge.
Not that I know of.
No, I haven't heard of it being done before.
Is there a reason not to, if we comply with criteria?
Usually, there's something not as thorough, like, in this case, if plastic was used, we would want crushed stone embedding the pipe, just to get the life-
All the way around?
Yeah, which adds a lot of cost. We bid one that way recently, I think it was maybe this one.
Yeah, it was this one.
And the plastic was more expensive that way. I guess we could eliminate that possible problem by going with concrete. We could bid both. The other thing is, if the county does a project and it's over fifty thousand, they have to get more, they have to hold a public hearing and have, get more prices, yeah, so, you don't actually have to bid it unless it's over a hundred, but this would be over a hundred, so they'd have to actually bid the project, instead of just hire somebody to do the work. Coefficients-
So, if they're private, they don't have to, they can just-
Right.
They can just hire whatever they want.
Yeah.
Joe below down the street says, "I'll do it for seventy-five."
Yeah.
That's just price, we're all in agreement.
I'll do it for a little bit of cost.
Personally, I guess, would not necessarily go with the lowest bid.
No, that's fine, that's my question, I guess, I'm assuming you guys could do it.
I'm concerned about the installation probably about as much as anybody.
Exactly.
Sure.
But I don't see what the benefit would be if they went private and then wanna give it back versus-
A future administration.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. For you guys, it's-
Well, yeah, they don't have the hassle of arguing with their neighbors, because then we do it.
Well, the whole role of the drainage position, the drainage clerk, there's a lot of procedural stuff that is a benefit of being in the drainage, you know, jurisdiction.
As in, you've been here every time with your notebook, taking notes, and you've become the-
You can be the drainage clerk.
You've become the secretary for this drainage project.
Stop looking for a job, guys.
Well, I'm just saying.
And what I've seen, it will make me grayer.
They're all appreciative of the work you're doing, though.
Yeah, well, there's no fee so far, so, you know, that's pretty easy to be appreciative. And, and there's still difference of opinion. So, yeah, no, I think there's a lot of, you know, procedural things, record keeping, that when you look at private perpetually just really, you know, does not seem palatable with 13 different pieces of land and I don't even know how many owners.
We imagine it's...
Between one or two, you know, a small group of, you know, two or three...
You can do it, yeah.
You know, I know that they work. I've been told that they work. You've got, you know, 13 separately owned pieces of property that are being...
And they're passing it in the future now.
Yeah, and in perpetuity does not seem like a decision for them. A good place to go.
Well, how, my question would be, say we did it private...
Yeah.
Five years down the road, it needed some work, then do you guys all take the initiative to hire a contractor to go in and fix it, whereas Trish, she puts a work order together for some part of this thing to be fixed and it's handled through, you know, here. We don't have anything to do with it, so we...
For the other severe issues of why I think future administration with the drainage commission, speaking totally personally, is my strong preference.
And what if one of the 13 landowners refused to pay for that, their share of the maintenance?
Yeah.
We don't have any ground to do it.
No, if it's not a drainage district, then that's why they need a set contract binding agreement, just like it is in drainage district. And even though there's no precedent that we know of, it is doable.
It is doable.
It is doable, but like Rick said, there's, the criteria is, is different. It has to be, there again, I'm not a drainage anything other than a thrust heap, but I don't go with, I think it could still be done privately without submitting it to bids, even though it's an expensive project. But it has to meet, they have to know the criteria on a private project to turn it back to the drainage district.
Yeah.
Because there again, we meet...
It has to be built a certain way.
Correct. It has to be built a certain way. Rick alluded to that. And still, you know, I think it could be done privately, correctly, criteria followed, and then be turned back to the drainage district.
And I guess I'm asking ahead of time, what is that criteria so that we don't go down that path?
Rick alluded to it. It's, it's concrete, it's properly installed plastic, it's got to be all of the above. It has to meet any of, something that comes before us criteria for them to do a private.
I'd say at least half inch drainage coefficient, if not more.
Wouldn't everybody feel better if you did have a left bid so rather than just going out and signing somebody to it? I mean, I think if I had a landlord, I'd want to get bids.
Privately, they still have a choice, so they can pick any of the bids they got.
Yeah, they could still take bids, but they could pick and choose. You don't have to take the lowest.
Yeah, they're not tied like you guys are.
Yeah, I guess I'd like a, you know, written, this is what you need to comply with, you know, so that we, you know, if you go that route, which I'm not even sure that's a possibility at this point, but that...
You can supply them with that, surely?
Yes, you know, that we, we comply with it.
Drainage is fairly...
Yeah, he's got...
But he wouldn't know like the engineering issues that you deal with, so...
Is it fair to mention scuttlebutt, which is sort of all the stuff that's sold around out there?
Sounds kind of dangerous to me.
Well, the, the, and you two, obviously being landowners, can correct me if I'm wrong. This is, there again, nothing official, because nothing's been officially done, that leaning amongst the landowners is away from the private project. Or Carmen brought up a good issue with the, taking care of it, if you will, getting, you know, what we just talked about, going back to the drainage district. So that and amongst other things, the leaning is away from the private project right now.
By some individuals on, on certain points, and I think there is, you know, I, I, you know, some of the reasons, you know, my reasons for not wanting to have it be a private project is the future administration.
Well, you're not the only one. And that's a valid point.
Yeah.
Valid. There's a lot of other landowners share your concern.
Yeah.
They look at down the road, 100 years, they may all be said and done and gone, and everything has been fine in their lifetime, but they're obviously concerned. They want a solid, you know, some, something in solid that to take care of it down the road. I mean, and it will at some point in time need to be taken care of. But it is doable privately to turn back...
Yeah, I, I don't see nothing wrong with accepting it if it's done according to other past projects.
Right.
And we have inspection going on while it's being done.
Right. Yeah, well, it can be done, but obviously not increase some...
I don't have a problem doing that, as long as that list that he puts together, and I'm assuming we're instructed him to put this list together, if it has 17 different steps and all 17 are met, then it would be done just like...
A normal project.
Kerry Jensen did a project out here in County K, or whoever the contractor was, and it was bid and he went through the 17 steps, no harm, no foul.
Yeah.
And the gist of the private thing, and we, there again, certainly the landowners correct me if I'm wrong, is a less cost project, if it comes out to be a less cost project, and if it can be agreed upon.
Yeah, and, yeah, and the obvious benefit is knowing that ahead of time, so can speak to those issues and...
Well, that kind of gets back to what we did today. We've got the reclassification, we've got that, and the work in this week.
Yeah, it's a matter of setting down and thinking through again.
If you thought it through, come up with a preliminary that you could at least propose, give it to us in a week or so and say, here, these are, this is shortlist. Does anybody have any issues with this or do you think we need any more? Then we can turn around and hand it to them in a week or two weeks at the most and say, here, this would be the minimum that we got to make sure, so then they could go to their group and say, is it worth? I mean, are we going to say, are we, what are we actually going to do here if five years down the road, we have an issue and, like you said, one of the 13 says, I don't, I'm not paying. I'm tired of paying.
Land's been inherited somebody in California.
Yeah. And one thing we'll have to deal with too, if it's done privately and they agree to who pays what to start with, if it's turned over to the county, then you're going to have to reclassify it for future maintenance.
You've got the maintenance level, that's a reclassification.
Yes, yes.
Or a classification.
Mm-hmm. That's, that's just part of the procedures you're obligated to do.
Good. Hopefully, that cleared it up, but it's like, um...
It's a little less messy. It sounds like we could kind of ball through the direction a little bit.
It's still about like the Des Moines world with all the soap and that, but...
Yeah.
It's still not, as clear as clear, but...
You won't take it. It's where we got to kind of get something, you know, maybe clarified for us.
Yeah, for everybody. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. I want to visit with you before you leave.
Yep, I'll be here for a while.
All right, nothing else?
I hope not.
I'll take a motion to go out of drainage.
Right, second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are out of drainage. Thanks, Rick.
You bet.
Thank you.
Okay, I think all we got left is our committee report.
Uh, I think all I had for last week was the work session on Thursday at eight here and nine niche withdrawal was the session on the second St. Agro Room. So what I did...
Didn't have much either, a work session. And on Tuesday, I went down to Fort Dodge with the CFR people, trying to figure out this fundraising with, this is on their board, their new facility going into Fort Dodge.
I think one thing I'd add to that, we're trying to, we still are working with that group out of, I think it's out there out of Detroit. There's a, some talk around that, you know, we haven't went public yet. We're still trying to get all of the things in line, but hopefully in the next few weeks, we're going to make, and I know Michelle is going to come, probably present to the board, because of the amount of clients that we treat out of Humboldt County. You know, I have a breakdown of Humboldt County versus Webster County versus Story County versus whoever else, Wright County. And it's amazing the amount of work. It's, it's a benefit for us to be able to have that facility, going to be right down behind Tom Thumb we own, or we bought that, whatever, four acres there. So, that facility for drugs, alcohol, rehab, the picture is just, if you wanted to take a tour of that, of our facilities now, Michelle would bend over backwards to take you through. It's just so outdated, it's scary. So, we're hoping, we're, we're, we're very hopeful that we're going to get this thing to start scooping dirt one of these days, and we got a new facility in progress, so that's what I'd like to...
Save the sheriff a lot of miles, too.
Yes, it would.
Yeah. One of the things that I threw out the other day at our meeting, and I think you concur that, is going to be coming each county wanting to help support that. But I'd be in favor of per capita, rather, you know, Story County ought to pay their share, and Webster County ought to pay their share. I don't think it's fair to have a little county like this getting the same amount as everybody else.
Right.
That's one of the things we talked about.
Right.
We are meeting tomorrow at 10 o'clock. Can we use that room here?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, Wednesday.
Wednesday, you want to use the fourth room?
10 o'clock.
Okay.
Just for a half hour maybe.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Okay, the only thing I had was the workshop and then out with the driver call. That was on Thursday. I had the same, the work session and the work session on Thursday, and then just...
LEC on Monday.
Excuse me?
LEC.
LEC, excuse me, yeah.
I always forget that one, because I...
That is, I always report, I like to report it the same day out, but yeah, past Monday, law enforcement, committee, just past Monday morning, and then Thursday, the two work sessions. And then the correspondence, all the stuff with the drainage thing on pursuit of both DD-2 tile on mostly Thursday, Friday last week.
I had LEC on Monday morning and then the work sessions on Thursday. All right. Anything else for us, baby?
No.
Anything else, any other board members we want to talk about? I move me to turn. Second. First, second, all in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
All right.